...road, which will be continued. But number three, the public hearing for Eagles Ridge. Number four and five, the applicant has requested to be removed from the agenda. That's the public hearing for Title Wave and the public hearing conditional use permit also from Title Wave. The applicant has requested those to be removed, so I would ask the commissioners to please remove those from the agenda. Item six is a public hearing for Baumgartner Park and Centennial Pool, the rezoning. Number seven, we have the preliminary plat for Baumgartner Park. Number eight, the final plat for Baumgartner Park. Number nine, we have the final plat for Hidden Point subdivision. Number...
Sunny Point.
Sunny Point, what did I say?
Hidden Point.
Hidden Point, oh, Sunny Point. Well, I'm gonna change it. Okay, no. Number 10, the, excuse me, is the planned unit final plan, site plan and design review for IHOP. Number 11, the master alternative sign plan for goodwill. Number 12, the other business, and of course 13, we will call for an adjournment. So with that, I would entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
So moved.
I'll say it.
Okay. Commissioner Peel and Commissioner Fairbanks, may I second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now, we will, I do, would entertain a motion. I have, I need to open the public hearing for the Wyatt Road, and then I'll need to, well, the applicant has requested for that to be continued to Monday, December the 11th. So I'll open the public hearing for the annexation of Wyatt Road.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Billups?
I would move that we postpone this item to December 11th, per applicant's request.
Thank you.
I'll say it.
Mr. Fair, Mr. Fairbanks second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much. Now, I will open the public hearing for Eagles Ridge. Let me give you some instructions on the process for the public hearing. I'll open the public hearing, I'll call for exhibits from our city attorney. The staff will make their presentation. I'll ask the applicant if they would like to make theirs. Call for witnesses in favor, as well as those opposed. We'll go ahead and have general discussion by the commissioners. I'll close the public hearing, and then we'll vote. So at this, I will call, open the public hearing and ask for the city attorney to get, read out the exhibits.
Madam Chairman, I offer the following exhibits into the record. Exhibit number one, staff report with attachments. Number two, affidavit of publication in the examiner on November 11, 2017. Three, application with attachments. Four, 185-foot notification map. Five, names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site. Six, copy of the letter sent to said property owners. Seven, Title IV Land Use Section Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference. And eight, 2014 comprehensive plan by reference.
Thank you very much. Mr. Jury, would you like to make your presentation for the city?
Thank you, Planning Commission. Before you today, the applicant, David Ward, is requesting, on behalf of Blue Springs Safety Storage, is requesting approval to vacate a portion of the street right-of-way that's located along the east side of Southwest Third Street at the intersection of Third Street and Southwest Webster Drive. This right-of-way, the portion of the right-of-way encapsulates approximately 847 square feet, so this is a pretty minimal size in the vacation of the right-of-way. The main purpose for this vacation is because the stub-street that was final-platted previously in 2006 is no longer necessary since the preliminary plat that was revised and approved recently actually removed the stub-out of Southwest Webster Drive. And I will mention that the background information and summary, the sentence, did leave out the word preliminary plat, but that is what was revised and is now removed. The axis that Webster Drive was supposed to go through, and you can see this a little bit clearer on this site plan provided by the applicant, but the stub-out of the street for Webster Drive was supposed to go through, but no longer is necessary, as there are two, one to the north and one to the south, access points that are going through past where Webster Drive was originally going to go through. But with that, the, since the stub-out is no longer necessary, staff does recommend approval of this vacation, and with three conditions. One of the more prominent conditions being that prior to final plat approval of Phase Four of the Eagles Ridge subdivision, the developer must remove the existing street connection and install the street improvements as required by Public Works. So there is a currently curb and gutter in that curved area that they are vacating, but a straight curb and gutter must be installed along the boundary of Southwest Third Street as required by Public Works. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Are there any questions by the commissioners? Thank you very much, Mr. Jury. Would the applicant like to come forward?
Robert Walquist.
Do you have a hand? Do you some further testimony about keeping this case to the truth as I've got?
I do.
May I give you any advice?
Robert Walquist, 821 Columbus, Lee Summit, Missouri. We, the client would like to request that that curb and gutter be placed when the actual lot is developed, because that, that is, I mean, he's got the final plat in now, and if that's a, I guess, a stipulation on that final plat, it might delay the actual building of, or getting that final plat approved. But that's actually right in front of a proposed lot, so that'll be developed when that lot is developed. Right now, it's not really harming anybody, it's just a stub-street, but it will be when that lot is built, they will put a driveway and put the curb and gutter and everything in, so.
I'll direct that to the, Mr. Allen?
Thank you, Chairman Banks, I will actually probably defer it to our city engineer as well, for his input in this.
Yeah, we don't have a problem with that. We, if, if you're not gonna remove the existing curb at this time, if you're gonna leave it in until you leave it in, that's fine.
Thank you.
Okay.
Madam Chair, the, perhaps a correction then to condition number two may state prior to certificate of occupancy for the lot in question. I think it's Lot 1. Okay. The developer must remove existing tree connection and install street improvements as required by Public Works. If Mr. Degenhardt is agreeable to that as well, then staff would recommend that.
Yeah, we are.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of this proposal?
Commissioner Haney?
Aye.
Chairman Banks?
Aye. Motion did carry, and that will be heard at the City Council on December the 4th at Anyone to speak in opposition? 6:00 PM. Hearing none, I'll ask commissioners, do you have any comments or questions? All right?
Madam Chair.
Now, number four and five have been removed, so we'll go to number six, that's also a Yes, Mr. Peel.
I'd like to pose a question to staff, were there any oppositional letters received
public hearing. Just remind you of my previous instructions, I'll go ahead and call the public hearing
on this particular application?
No.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Are there any other questions? to order. That is the public hearing for rezoning, and I'll ask the city attorney for the exhibits. All right, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and I would entertain a motion
Madam Chairman, I offer the following exhibits into the record. Exhibit one, staff report with attachments.
with the revision to number two.
Exhibit two, affidavit of publication in the examiner on November 11, 2017.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Billups?
Number three, application with attachments.
I would move for approval of VAC 11176093, Vacation of Eagles Ridge Estates, PRO Phase
Number four, 185-foot notification map. Number five, names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site.
One, with the staff recommendations changing number two to be prior to a certificate of
Number six, copy of the letter sent to said property owners. Number seven, Title IV Land Use Section Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference. And number eight, 2014 comprehensive plan by reference.
occupancy of Lot 1, as opposed to prior to the final plat approval.
Thank you very much. Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Wright will be presenting this, and you're gonna present six, seven, and eight on the Do I hear a second?
Second.
Commissioner Peel? agenda together, correct? This will be a roll-call vote.
Yep, that's correct.
Planning Commissioner Cradoff?
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Banks and commissioners.
Aye.
Before this evening, are three requests related to Baumgartner Park and Centennial Pool
Commissioner Casey?
Aye.
Commissioner Graham?
Aye.
Commissioner Fairbanks?
Complex, which is located at the northwest corner of Northwest 22nd Street and Northwest
Aye.
Commissioner Peel?
Aye.
Commissioner Billups?
Ashton Drive. First request is a rezoning by the city of Blue Springs, requesting to rezone the subject property from SF-7 Single Family to PLOS, which is the Public Land and Open Space Zoning District. This property includes approximately 12.71 acres. Since the city is requesting the property be platted, we believe it's appropriate to bring the property into compliance with the current UDC. The PLOS zoning district was first added to the UDC in 2010 and was included in the 2015 update as a special zoning district specifically for parks and recreation. This is the first rezoning request to that zoning district. The second and third requests are for a preliminary and a final plat for the park and pool complex. The current property will be platted into two separate lots. The north lot is Lot 1, which consists of approximately 8.83 acres. That would be Baumgartner Park as it exists today. Lot 2 would be the remaining 3.24 acres, which is at the corner of 22nd and Ashton. Consists of 3.24 acres and is where Centennial Poolplex is currently. There are no public infrastructure improvements required at this location, all the streets and sidewalks are in, as well as utilities. Limits of no access have been provided along Northwest Ashton Drive to limit any access, any future driveways to that as part of traffic calming along 22nd Street, or along Ashton Drive, especially during peak hours when Blue Springs High School generates a lot of traffic. The rezoning must be approved prior to the final plat being approved by the City Council. The final plat must be approved and recorded prior to the transfer of any, any ownership of either lot. The city is currently working with the school district on transferring the Centennial Poolplex to the school district for operation and maintenance. The city will retain ownership of Baumgartner Park. City, staff does recommend approval of the rezoning and the preliminary and final plat, subject to the three conditions in the staff report. And as the city, as the city is the applicant, staff is also filling the role as applicant this evening, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Are there any commissioners that would like to ask Mr. Wright a question? I guess not, thank you.
Thank you.
Would the applicant like to come forward?
Madam Chair, the, since the city is the applicant, we'll certainly be available for any questions this evening.
Okay.
Thank you.
That'd be great. All right. Now, we will, I'll go ahead and, is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition or in favor, since hearing none? I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. We will be voting on the public hearing rezoning separately, and that will be a roll-call vote.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Billups?
I would make a motion to approve the RZ 11176096 Baumgartner Park and Centennial Poolplex rezoning.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
Mr. Fairbanks? All right, roll call.
Okay. Planning Commissioner Casey?
Aye.
Commissioner Graham?
Aye.
Commissioner Fairbanks?
Aye.
Commissioner Peel?
Aye.
Commissioner Billups?
Aye.
Commissioner Haney?
Aye.
Commissioner Cradoff?
Aye.
Chairman Banks?
Aye. Motion carried. All right, that will go before the City Council on December the 4th, also at 6:00. Now, we will have a, we need to vote separately on item number seven, the preliminary plat.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Peel.
I need to ask a question of staff, actually, two questions. On the 185 notification letters, were any received back as non-deliverable?
No.
Were there any oppositional letters ever sent?
No.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. All right, I would entertain a motion on the preliminary plat for Baumgartner Park.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Billups, go ahead.
I would move for approval of preliminary plat PP 11176094 for Baumgartner Park and Centennial Poolplex, with the three staff recommendations.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Casey? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carried. All right, now we'll go to the final plat, and I would entertain a motion.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Billups? We're working this tonight.
I would also make a motion to approve the final plat DF 11176095 for Baumgartner Park and Centennial Poolplex, again with the three staff recommendations.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
Mr. Fairbanks? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carried. All right, now we'll go to the final plat, and I would entertain a motion.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Billups? We're working this tonight.
I would also make a motion to approve the final plat DF 11176095 for Baumgartner Park and Centennial Poolplex, with the three staff recommendations.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Casey? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carried. All right, now we'll go to the final plat, and I would entertain a motion.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Billups? Go ahead.
I would move for approval of preliminary plat PP 11176094 for Baumgartner Park and Centennial Poolplex, with the three staff recommendations.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Casey? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carried. All right, now we'll go to the final plat, and I would entertain a motion.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Billups? We're working this tonight.
I would also make a motion to approve the final plat DF 11176095 for Baumgartner Park and Centennial Poolplex, again with the three staff recommendations.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
Mr. Fairbanks? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carried. Now, that will also go to, the final plat will go to the City Council, also December the 4th at 6:00 PM. All right, now we'll go to number nine, item nine on the agenda, that's the final plat for Sunny Point. Okay, Mr. Jury?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before you today, I, we did hand out an actual memo, that's for most, or all of you, hopefully, requesting for a couple changes to the staff report that was provided and published for Sunny Point Second Plat. The two main changes on that staff report are, I'll go over these in a little bit more detail later, but the correction to the budding zoning and land uses section in the staff report, and then also adding a seventh condition to the final plat. So, the applicant, Shawn Woods, on behalf of Sunny Point Investors, is requesting final plat approval of Sunny Point Second Plat, which is located on the east section, or east of Northwest Artemis Road, north of Northwest Chapman Drive, and south of Northwest Shepherd Road, approximately 8.11 acres, and it encapsulates 31 lots and three open space tracts. It is zoned SF-7 PRO, which is Single Family Plan Residential Overlay. It's currently undeveloped, it does have street infrastructure, and most of the existing public improvements have been inspected by the city, and we're pretty close to approving everything in, in terms of storm, sewer, water, and, and the street improvements. So, we do believe that they will get everything done before the City Council meeting. I'll go over a little bit of the history of this site. City Council did approve the PRO, Planned Residential Overlay, for the Sunny Point subdivision as a whole in 2002, and this subdivision did incorporate, or encapsulate, 31 acres approximately, and 90 single-family lots. The first phase, as you can see, just to the south of the dashed line in the image on the screen here, was approved back in 2004, and it did have a PRO final plan for the entire subdivision, but it did require a revised landscape plan to be submitted. After 2004, development did stall, and that landscape plan was never submitted at that point. So, we did ask this new applicant, new developer, to revise the old landscape plan with the conditions that Planning Commission put on that previously. And, and I'll go over the revised landscape here in, in a little bit, too. But now, the, the next phase is coming through, the developer is requesting approval for On the landscape plan, I'll go over first. The two things that the Planning Commission did require back in 2004 were that any existing tree must be replaced at a rate of one inch of diameter. If one inch diameter of tree is removed, one inch of diameter of tree must be replaced. The other condition was that a total of 50 blue spruces must be placed on the trail, along the trail, where there was only 25 proposed originally. But now, the applicant has provided a total of 61 green ashes, they're not blue spruces, but staff does believe this meets the intent of, of the Planning Commission's condition back in 2004. And they also provided 24 maple trees to replace the 60 inches of diameter tree, diameter of trees that were lost. So the landscape plan came into compliance with this revision, and the final plat does meet the preliminary plat and matches everything that was required with all the setbacks and, and lot sizes and everything. The only couple things I'll mention on the conditions, as I rotate this through, with condition number seven added here, or in front of you, but condition number two, we do require that all trails and landscapes, landscaping and tracks G through I must be installed or financially guaranteed. The public improvements do need to be installed, tested, and functioning properly with as-built and maintenance bonds, as required by Public Works. The development maintenance agreement and the declaration of homes and declaration restrictions must be actually approved and recorded with the final plat. And the seventh condition that we did add, I'll read word for word, prior to final plat approval, a temporary access and utility easement must be dedicated for the temporary cul-de-sacs, a drainage easement must be dedicated between lots 38 and 39, and the drainage easement and landscape easement language must be revised as required by Public Works. So, with that, I will stand for any questions, but staff does recommend approval of this final plat with seven conditions.
Are there any questions?
Yes.
Commissioner Fairbanks?
I have a question. So, Phase One did not have a homeowners association recorded?
If, if memory serves me, I believe it went defunct at some point. The developer might be able to answer that question a little bit better than myself, but...
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Billups?
One question. So there's, there will be a, a third plat, is, it will, the remainder of this all be in a, in one additional plat, or will there be multiple after this?
One, one remaining plat, yes.
Are there any other questions? Would the applicant like to come forward?
Shawn Woods, representing Sunny Point Investors, 5050 Southwest US Highway 40, Blue Springs, Missouri.
Are there any questions for Mr. Woods?
Yes, I have a question.
Commissioner Fairbanks?
Are the streets, they're public streets, or are they private streets?
They're public.
They are public?
Yes.
I thought that the HOA proposal indicated private.
No, they're public streets.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions for the applicant? Commissioner Billups?
Speaking of, those streets are already in, right, from...
Correct.
...when all of this was done back? What condition are they in? Are they gonna have to be redone, or...
No, they were inspected by Public Works. The previous contractor had come back and sealed some gaps between the curves and the asphalt, but other than that, they've been accepted, just recently.
Good.
Okay. Are there any other questions? I guess not.
Thank you.
Mr. Woods, thank you. Okay, is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or, or opposition to this proposal?
This is not a public...
No, it's not. I'm just in a habit. Okay. I would entertain a motion. Madam Chair.
Haney?
Make motion to approve final plat PF 10176056, Sunny Point Second Plat, with the seven conditions.
Thank you. Sorry.
Second.
And who is the second? Commissioner Billups? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carried, that will go to the City Council, also December the sixth, I mean, 4th at 6:00. December the 4th at 6:00. That's the final plat for Sunny Point. Thank you. All right, now we'll go to item 10, which is the planned unit final plan, site plan and design review for IHOP. Mr. Jury, you have that one, too.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The property owner and the applicant, Blue Property LLC, Mohammed Tofah Ha, on behalf of that, is requesting approval of the PUD final plan and site plan design review for a 6,996-square-foot restaurant and retail building located in Adams Dairy Landing Area Two, which is generally located on the northwest corner of northeast Coronado Drive and northeast Adams Dairy Landing. Adams Dairy Landing being a private street that runs within the area itself. Its address is at 1135 Northeast Coronado Drive. It encapsulates 1.38 acres, and it is currently one lot, zoned general business, PUDRO, which is GB, PUDRO, which is General Business, Planned Unit Development, Restricted Overlay. I will, with a little background on this site, the Area Two was previously approved in 2009. Three out of the six proposed pad sites have been developed at this point. Subject property, as you can see on the dashed line here on screen, was approved for a pad site for a 5,200-square-foot building, but the applicant is now asking for a 6,996-square-foot building, which is over what was previously allowed. But the code does allow an increase of 5%, and, and if, through the PUD final plan, without going back through the concept plan, if, if it is underneath 5%. And as calculated for Area Two, which is generally the areas here on screen and circled in red, that whole Area Two had three, or 39,339 square feet of building area, and 5% of that is less than the increase that the applicant is requesting. So this is an acceptable increase in built area. an acceptable increase in built area for IHOP. The site plan here, as you can see, the...I'll zoom in a little bit. There'll be approximately a 2,000-square-foot retail space and almost a 5,000-square-foot restaurant space for IHOP. There's a sidewalk running along the access drive that was required since the Adams Dairy Landing was requiring a more robust interior pedestrian element in replacement of sidewalks along Coronado. So, or in lieu of sidewalks along Coronado on the north side of Coronado. So, there is the sidewalk going from Coronado all the way to the north side of the site, as required. And there's also an additional pathway running through to the main entrance that's a little bit more direct. The setbacks and everything have been met. Also, the parking, number of parking spaces were within the allowed and required spaces there. The landscaping, they are providing more open space landscaping than required through the area, or the PUD Final Plan for Area 2, previously approved. But they are underneath the parking lot landscaping. But overall, the net increase, they are providing a net increase of 87 plant units, which is more than what they are required. So, staff believes that this is an acceptable change in the landscaping plan. The lighting, we'll go through the design standards first, I guess. The elevations are shown here. There is more than 40%, more than 40% of each facade is composed of masonry materials. The blue slate roof is a deviation from the standard design in the Adams Dairy Landing area, but red development does allow a deviation if it's less than 10% of any facade. And it is provided to be less than 10% of each facade for the blue, that blue-colored roof. The trash enclosure is screened as necessary. They're using a mix of stone, glass, brick, wood, metal, and ephes, mainly some cultured stone is their, cultured stone and brick are the two main materials on these facades, though. Here's a floor plan showing the restaurant on the right and the retail space on the left. And also, the photometric plan with the required lighting meeting our standards With that, staff does recommend approval of the PUD Final Plan and Site Plan Design Review with four staff conditions. I'll stand for any questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Jury? Yes, Commissioner Phillips?
Mr. Jury, were there any other arrangements looked at as far as the way the parking lot is laid out? This, I mean, over half of the parking spaces are behind this building or even behind the adjacent lot. It just seems like you're going to have a lot of people not happy with where they're going to have to park to get into the restaurant. And while I fully know that it's awkward to have to make that drive all the way to the back row before you go out into the feeder, it just seems like if you rearranged that, you'd have the parking more convenient to the entrance to the building.
This arrangement of the building and parking lot was, was pretty much matching what was approved back in 2000, with the Area 2 Plan, Final Plan, back in 2004, or whenever that was. So, there wasn't a lot of rearrangement. I don't know if part of the reason for this arrangement was to keep the, to provide for stacking requirements or something, but there wasn't a lot of talk of rearranging the site.
Okay.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Jury?
Madam Chair. Mr. Jury, could you just real quick remind me what the buildings on either side of the site are?
Yeah, on the west side, I believe that's Chipotle's building. And then, on the east side, that's where Jersey Mike's. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Jury. Would the applicant like to come forward?
Thank you, Commissioners. I am actually not the applicant. I am just, my name is John Rowland. I'm with Cobb Valley Engineering. We are the civil firm who did all the site layout for this. So, I'm just here representing them. If you have any additional questions on a civil engineering standpoint, I'd be more than happy to answer them if I can. Just wanted to get on the record, basically.
So, is the parking situation something that you would have addressed?
If it would have been brought up a little earlier, if we would have known about it, yeah, we definitely would have. Typically, on a site like this, my knowledge on the project is actually pretty slim. The person in charge of it wasn't able to come today, so I'm kind of standing in his place. So, I'll work through it the best I can. Generally, what'll happen is, it may not be possible to get a great layout, either based on what Mr. Jury had already alluded to as the earlier layout of the site, when they did kind of a master plan to put it together, or with the way the site is graded out, with the difference in elevations and where the road ties in, it can be difficult to get necessarily a great working order, as it were. So, that's probably why they went with more of what had been proposed back in 2004, as far as site layout goes.
Well, it seems like the traffic there is horrendous. I mean, the traffic flow is horrible. I don't know if that's something that can be addressed or not. It's just, from a customer perspective, the traffic is horrible.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Jury? I mean, for the applicant?
Can you repeat your name again?
John Rowland.
Rowland?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I guess not. Thank you very much for filling in. All right. I would entertain a motion for the Planned Unit Final Site and Design Review for IHOP.
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Haney?
Make a motion to approve Planned Unit Final Plan Site Plan and Design Review, PUDS 1117 6098, with the four conditions.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Commissioner Casey with the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you. All right. We will go to Item Number 11, Master or Alternative Sign Plan for Goodwill. Again, Mr. Jury.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before you today is the applicant's request. Kim Cohen with Goodwill at Western Missouri and Eastern Kansas, to request approval of a master sign plan for Goodwill itself, which is located at 926 Southwest 7 Highway. It's approximately on the southeast corner of Southwest 7 Highway and Southwest 40 Highway. The area is zone general business, as you can see here. It's mainly retail in that location. And the Planning Commission has approved two master or alternative sign plans in this area before, one for Westlake Hardware Center back in 2007, and also one for Red Rex Thrift Store back in 2010. Those were mainly for the size of the sign that they are requesting. The main request behind this alternative sign plan application is that they are requesting signage on the south facade of the building, which does not face any street, and it's not above any main entrance, but it is the location of their donation center. And they are asking for rather minimal signage. They're asking for some signage on their awning, and then also some metal signs that come out into a triangle and project approximately 17 inches away from the wall. And they're proposed to be seven feet off the ground, but staff does recommend that those are eight feet off the ground for head clearance. And that's one of the sign code parameters as well, requirements, that any projecting sign does need to be eight feet above the ground. This will not, here's the facade that is going on. This will not change the, or this will only add a minimal amount of signage on to the existing, all of the existing signs on site. Altogether, there's a little over 100 square feet of signage on the south wall. There will be four, 24-square-foot signs with the triangle metal, or metal triangle signs. And then, there'll be the awning sign, which is approximately 12 square feet by Altogether, they are underneath the allowed total signage for the entire site. If you calculate all of the existing signs plus the proposed signs, they are allowed a total of, they're proposing 1,144 square feet, but they are allowed a total of 1,486 square feet. So, they are, they are underneath what is allowed for the entire site as a whole. And their only request is that they do, they are allowed on a sign, or on a facade that is not facing the street or is their main entrance. So, with that, staff does recommend approval with two staff conditions, one of those being the minimum of eight feet clearance. I'll stand for any questions.
Do the Commissioners have any questions? Yes, Commissioner Fairbanks?
Got another question. That little rectangular area to the south of the Goodwill, is that a business that would also request a sign on that south side?
I don't believe, I'm not, I don't think they have a good door. It's main, or an entrance door, I should say. They might use it as an employee exit or something. But here's the facade showing here, and I'll zoom in a little bit. I believe the lease line's somewhere around here, and...
Okay, I just remembered that there were two or three trash dumpsters there, and then you drove on back to the drop-off location. So, it looks like those trash dumpsters are still there, but there is a door there. I just, it's like, okay, well, if Sally's going to get three signs, then maybe we want to sign two.
And if they do want a sign on that location, they'll have to come back through and ask for it through this alternative sign plan as well. But, but at this point, I'm not sure if they do or not.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Chair, for orientation, that is Dollar Tree on the end of cap there, so, end of the building.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Are there any other questions for Mr. Jury? The Commissioners? Would the applicant like to come forward? If you, carrying your name, please?
Kim Cohen.
Kim Cohen. Thank you.
And I'm the Director of Facilities for Mocan Goodwill, and thank you, Nathan. I just, if anybody has any questions about this, I'm happy to try to answer them.
Commissioners have any questions for the applicant?
I'd like a clarification. The signs that were shown were all in a row, but they said they were triangular, like that, they point out. Is that correct?
Yeah, they're, it's hard to do this. They're dimensional, so they stand away from the wall. They're kind of a triangular projection out.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? All right. I don't have, could you put the conditions up for me, please? Okay. I just want to make sure you have the eight feet on there. Thank you very much. All right. I would entertain a motion, if there aren't any other further questions, for the Master Alternative Sign Plan for Goodwill?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Casey?
I move that Master Alternative Sign Plan ASP 1117 6097 be approved with the two staff conditions.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Craft? Mr. Craft? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Okay. Now, we'll go to other business. I think, Mr. Allen, you have something for us that you'd like to cover?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Just a short while ago, last week or two, several of the City Council attended the National League of Cities Summit in Charlotte, North Carolina. So, with that, Mayor Potem, Councilman Carter, wanted to share some photos that would be of interest to the Planning Commission. And I have the photos, and presume he has the script, so...
A script?
This is the show-and-tell portion tonight.
Thank you.
As Mr. Allen said, we visited Charlotte, North Carolina for the National League of Cities City Summit. And I think we're all very impressed with Charlotte. Charlotte, the metro area, is roughly the size of Kansas City, but it's definitely a city growing. They get 50 new residents a day as an influx into Charlotte. And they have some very cool things there that, if you can think and dream, you might see Blue Springs in the future. I'm going to take you through some of these pictures. I'm not sure what order they're up. This neighborhood that we're in is on the south side of Charlotte. Charlotte, right now, has light rail. And anyone who knows me knows that I'm a huge proponent of light rail and can envision a day in the Kansas City area where you can get on a train in Blue Springs and go all the way to the Speedway. You can go from KCI into Johnson County and down into Grandview and that area. We're not there yet, but we're starting with a trolley in downtown Kansas City. We've begun to build it, and I think once you begin to build it, you're going to continue to build it. This area was a brewery, which we just approved a brewery for Main Street in Blue Springs. And it's a very vibrant area. You can see young folks out. And this was the case in several of these types of breweries on our little walking tour and rail tour that we took. And you can see that this was just, this was a weeknight in Charlotte. It was packed, young people, there was music, and they even brought their dogs. And I've got a slide of that coming up here, too. There's Councilman Edmondson having a very good time, which you can see around. It's got lights everywhere. There were food trucks behind it. So, just a gathering spot for a lot of millennials in the Charlotte area. Everybody brought their dog. That's an Aussie poo. I think that's going to be my next dog. I really thought he was friendly. But there were a lot of dogs in the area with their owners, having a good time. Okay. And I took several pictures of the apartment complexes, and you can see the rail. That's the rail that goes north to south in Charlotte. And they have also already approved an eastern spur. And on the boards, on the drawing boards, is a western spur that will go to their airport as well. And again, this is a city roughly the size of Kansas City. But I always hear Commissioner Phillips talk about varying degrees of architecture. And I'm with him on that. And you can see this apartment complex. Here's another one that's completely different. All of this in the same neighborhood. That one, and that one. Some of them have dog parks attached to them. It's a very walkable area. There are trails. And then, of course, there's the rail. And that rail goes north to south. That stop is right at our hotel, and across the street from that is the convention center. And I think that's it. But just some cool stuff there, and how about that, Commissioner Billups? You like the varying degree of architecture? I like the middle one the most, I think, of the three. But it reminds me of a complex that they built down just south of the plaza--
Yeah.
--on Main Street in-- But it's all very different, and you know, maybe one day, way in the future, as we think about downtown Blue Springs, with light rail taking you into downtown Kansas City and apartment complexes maybe not this big, but certainly this type for millennials who might want to live in downtown Blue Springs and commute to Kansas City or work in Blue Springs. So there you go.
Interesting. That'd be great.
I have a question for you, Councilman Carter.
Yes.
Is there any discussion for light rail in the near future in our, in our area?
No. Councilman Culpepper and I served on that committee for two, three years. I think Kansas City Southern, correct if I'm wrong here, I believe Kansas City Southern is the roadblock right now.
Or Union Pacific, one of the other.
We have the existing rail, which makes it a cheaper proposition in Kansas City than in a lot of other cities. If we can get all, we thought we had all of the rail companies on board. There was one that's standing in the way, but I think ultimately it's gonna happen. We built the trolley in downtown, and right now it's the trolley to nowhere. But they're starting to talk about moving it north into Berkeley Riverfront Park, south into UMKC. And once that kind of thing gets started, and you can look at cities of similar size, it will get built. Thank you.
That'd be great.
All right.
All right.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Councilman Carter. Before I came to Blue Springs, I worked in the Twin Cities metropolitan area as they were just starting their light rail system. They're just getting the planning done and getting the funding sorted out. Have you ever been there in the last 10 to 15 years? As Councilman Carter states, they keep expanding and growing, adding light rail lines, adding commuter rail. And certainly, Blue Springs would be prime location on any of those routes, commuter rail or light rail. So absolutely. And funny enough, I was in Charlotte 10 years ago, 2007, right before the recession happened, and saw a lot of this start as well. So it was exciting to see the photos from Councilman Carter and see the, the growth and expansions occurring in the last 10 years during and post recession. So with that, Councilman, Madam Chair, I do have the agenda, draft agenda for the next meeting. Would you like to go through that?
That'd be great.
All right. Thank you. December 11th is the next meeting, two weeks from tonight. Hardly leave will be December 11th already. The one item that was continued tonight is the de-annexation, 27711 East White Road. That, again, was continued to December 11th, along with two other items related to One Project Eagles Ridge Estates, PRO, first plat, that's the PRO final plan and final plat for lots 1 through 37, related to the item you saw tonight with the vacation of that stub road. So those are the only items we have right now for the December 11th. And also, we had discussed at a previous meeting, we are still on track for a Wednesday, December 27th, meeting. And we do have some applications that we're anticipating to come forward here with the next agenda deadline, which is this Friday. So after this Friday, we should have a clearer picture as to how that agenda will look. But again, we did have a quorum last time we discussed it, but if anything has changed in terms of your holiday plans coming up, please let Karen know as soon as possible in case there are any issues with quorum. We want to make sure that potential applicants have sufficient notice should there be any issues for that, that week. Again, we realize it is during that kind of prime holiday week, so. If you know right now, certainly let, let us know as well. Thank you.
Is there anybody contemplating not being able to be here that you know? If, like they said, if you can, please let them know. I appreciate it. Okay. Is there any other business anybody would like to bring up?
I was wondering what kind of response you've had to the developer workshop?
We've had a total of 20 people RSVP.
Are those developers?
Yes.
Okay.
And anyone here on the commission that would like to attend, please let me know. And I'll put your name down.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Is there anything else? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Mr. Billups?
I'll second it.
Commissioner Fairbanks, right?
Yep.
I thought I heard your voice. All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carry. Meeting's adjourned. Thank you. Good night.